Okay, folks, I think we have a quorum. Good morning, former councilmember Mike DeJus. Good to see you. So we'll start with the roll call for today's meeting, June 9th. Welcome, everyone. And we'll start with a roll call.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandow. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Soria. Council President Capriolio.
Next, we'll have our invocation by Rabbi Rick Weiner. If I mispronounce it, I'm sorry.
You got it.
Temple Beth Israel. Would you all please stand and join in prayer, then we'll pledge the flag after that.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. In the Jewish community, we read through the five books of Moses each year as part of our ritual, and this week, we begin the book of Numbers, which seems perfect for the budgetary process we engage in at this time in our city. May our work with Numbers reflect the sacred values we employ to ensure that all of our city's inhabitants are recognized as having been made in the image of God. But Numbers is not the original name of this biblical book. In Hebrew, we call it bar, which means "in the wilderness," and marks our years of wandering as we traveled to the Promised Land. It was indeed a time of transition in which those leaving Egyptian slavery made way for the next generation who would enter the Promised Land as a free people. The time in the wilderness is a time of growth ripe with possibilities. May our work honor the successes of those who have brought blessings to our city. May we have the strength and spirit to continue to bring blessings to our city, and may those who continue this work bring us ever closer to the Promised Land that Fresno can be. Shalom, uvra'ha, peace and blessing.
Well, face the flag, please. Ready? Salute. Our pledge is given.
How ironic, the Numbers and the budget. That was a great observation, and we need a lot of help, trust me. Okay. Next, we'll go to Todd on my screen. Is it really? Did everyone punch up? I've got so many. Bruce, did you guys? I have everybody punched up. I don't know if that was accurate. Pretty much. Of course.
Hello.
I can take him off.
Is it councilmember reports?
Not yet.
I just wanted to acknowledge.
Go ahead.
He's gone. Former councilmember Mike DeJus was in the gallery a few moments ago.
Right there.
Oh, there you are. That's all. I just wanted to acknowledge his presence.
You don't want to tell him how relaxed he looks not being a councilmember anymore, and he's, yeah, eyes are sparkly, and he's, you know. Welcome, Mr., former councilmember DeJus, my good friend. Okay, well, we'll address the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have some changes. Item 2D is in David. Should be on the consent calendar, not general administration. So when we consider the consent, we should include this one. And then the proclamation for Alzheimer's Independence Day has been moved to June 16th. And the last change is item 2H is subject to the mayor's veto, and it's not noted on the agenda. Those are all the changes I have.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with changes? Motion by member Soria. Seconded by member Brand. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 5-0 with members Brandow and Baines absent. Are there any changes to the minutes of June 12th? Second. I'm gonna hit on myself. No changes, thank you. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? I'll make the motion. Seconded by member Olivier, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 5-0 with members Baines and Brandow absent. I'll just add, for the record, member Brandow is actually here, but he was involved in a collision this morning, so he's okay, but he has to do some things to get that clarified. So he'll be out with us in a few minutes. Okay. Now, councilmember reports and brief comments. I don't think my screen is clear. If you have some comments, please punch up. Nope? Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Would any councilmember like to pull any item for discussion on the consent calendar? If so, we'll hear it at 1:30 this afternoon. Member Soria?
Can I pull 1B, please?
Thank you. B is in boy. And anyone else wish to pull any items? Seeing none, I'll address 1B at 1:30. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on the consent calendar? Please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to discuss any item on the consent calendar. No one's taking advantage of that, so do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Motion by member Brand, seconded by me. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 6-0 with member Baines absent. Next is general administration, 2A workshop regarding the airport finance. My favorite team is here this morning, so welcome, and the floor is yours.
Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. This morning, we want to do a brief discussion and workshop on airport finances, how it works, how our money comes in, where it goes, and give the council a snapshot of basically a 10-year plan that we have in place to ensure that the airport remains viable and can accommodate future growth that we anticipate will happen. Few quick facts about the airport. We are supported by tenant rates and charges. Obviously, we receive no tax revenue, which is the way it's supposed to be, is the way the FAA mandates it to be. Our operating expenses are paid for with operating revenue. Capital is paid for with grants, a little bit of Measure C, passengers, facility charges, et cetera. One unique thing about the airports, the grants we do receive for capital can only be for capital. In other words, we can't use it for operating expenses. And of course, we do have debt. We do have a debt service annually that we have to meet, and it's based on the airport's ability to generate net revenue, obviously not by, through the city taxing authority. We are a low-cost facility. Rates and rentals paid by the carriers are discounted below cost recovery levels. We do that intentionally. We are very sensitive to the amount of money that the airlines do have to pay us. We have a number of different revenue streams that we have, and so the key here is that everybody does pay their fair share, who, when I say everybody, the stakeholders of the airport, whether it's the airlines, and its parking, and it's the FAA, and TSA, and rental car activities, and so forth and so on. Our revenue structure is also highly diversified, which is important. Airline payments account for about 26% of our revenue stream. That is significant because, you know, when we have economic downturns, you know, there's a little bit of insulation there, because when there's downturns, people will fly less. We're the first to feel it, and businesses pull back, people don't fly as much on leisure, et cetera. We also have been very good about maintaining operating costs. Between FY '10 and '15, we've grown 17%, but we've remained pretty constant with our operating costs. We've done a lot with a little, like, I think, the rest of the city. And our annual debt burden is very reasonable relative to our total revenue. One of the things that the airlines look at is, well, how much does it cost us to operate at the airport? And one of the measurements is cost per in plane passenger. In other words, for every ticket an airline sells, there's a little bit of money that comes to the airport to help. That's that 26%. You'll see in red, that's Fresno, about $6.59. So the airlines pay us about $6.59 every time a passenger buys a ticket. We did this snapshot of other airports to give you a sense of what do the airports pay, and we're definitely at the low end of the scale there. When you look at the low, low end, like a Boise, they don't have debt service. And Palm Springs, a very robust revenue stream from other sources besides, because it's a very, it's a leisure market. I like this slide, and almost more importantly than the cost per in plane passenger, the airlines look at the percent of revenue that they make as to what they pay the airport. And this is specific to Fresno. Approximately $150 million the airlines pull out of our market with airfares. The industry average that they pay airports is about 6%, and you see that kind of orange on the far right there. We're at about 3.3%, and we are proposing a rate increase over five years that will bring us to about 4%. Still, and that's part of the plan here, is still well below the benchmark that the airlines look at, that they think is reasonable to pay airports. And so our goal has always been to be below those benchmarks. So nobody can ever say, hey, are we overcharging, or is it too expensive to fly out of Fresno, too expensive to operate out of Fresno? Going back one slide, you see that Sacramento? You know, they had a billion-dollar terminal project, and that really drove up their costs. Didn't affect their passengers. They're still flying in and out. It's just, it just affects the airlines' costs. And it also does not affect their airfares. Their airfares are based on what the market bears.
So in the proposed increase, where would it put us relative to the other cities?
We would be about 4%. That's that little, in the center, see that little five-year plan, that little center section there? We're about 3.3%. It'll push us about 4% of the money that the airlines make out of our market.
But in terms of the payment, because, you know, in the previous slide, you have $6.59, or $6.59 for Fresno?
Oh, yeah, there's $6.59 to Fresno. We'll get to that in a minute. I've got that data a little bit later on, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Actually, we have a 10-year plan that shows you each year what that would be. Yes. So moving on pretty quickly here, a little bit of history. We've grown 19.3% through '14. What's interesting is departures have increased 17% just this last spring. We are in pace to break a record. We're very close here. We're in the fiscal year in a few weeks, and I'm going to estimate we'll end up at about 730-plus in planes this fiscal year. Last year was 704. The record is 717. So just to give you an idea, we've been at a 10% plus or minus growth rate this, first half of this year already. Our growth rate domestically has exceeded San Francisco, has exceeded Oakland. So there's something happening here. The airlines have been putting more seats into our market, and they're getting filled. Just to give you a sense, in May, the airlines have added 22% more seats compared to May of last year, and they're getting filled. I don't have May data yet, but these are pretty impressive numbers for the relatively small market that we have. The other part of this is that financially, we've been doing pretty good. We do have 365 days of reserves in the bank. That's a requirement of the rating agencies, and the plan is to keep that moving forward and not dip into it. Because like I said, when you have economic downturns, airports are the first to feel it. You know, people just stop flying. And then when you come out of a recession, we're the last. People cautiously start feeling more comfortable about spending money, so we have to have that kind of insulation. Our debt service ratio is hovering around 2.0, very good. At the minimum, what we need to have is 1.25. It's a good picture for our airport. We have high coverage ratio. We have high liquidity. We are airline-friendly in terms of our cost structure, and I'm going to show you in just a little bit how that will continue to be the case in our projections over the next 10 years. Real quick, I won't spend a lot of time on this, because I think a lot of you are aware of the fact that airports are highly regulated by the FAA when it comes to revenues. We have to use our revenues, obviously, only on the airport. The FAA has a revenue policy that controls how rates and charges are determined. Airlines pay based on historical and not market-based rates, meaning what are your costs, and this is what you need to pay, not what we think you should pay, not what the market bears. The third bullet, I just threw it in here just to give you a sense of the reach of the They also regulate how we can incentivize airlines. We do have an incentive program that I am planning to come to council on a revision, because it is outdated later this month. That is very important to us, because if there's one area where we can impact airfares, it's competition. And so our goal is to improve competition, you know, head-to-head competition. We have great competition to Guadalajara, low airfares. We have good competition to beyond first stops, like in New York and so forth. You can get there many different ways. We don't have real good competition, for example, like Yushwan or Denver, just one choice. So we want to improve that competition, and that's what our incentive program will do. And lastly, we do have grant assurances we have to comply with that says that our pricing structure must ensure the airport is self-sustaining. And of course, we can't discriminate. We can't offer, you know, incentives to one area and not to another area. Also, we have to ensure that all stakeholders are paying their fair share, whatever that fair share is. So we have been meeting with the airlines, actually, last fall, last winter, through early this year. We do this every year with them, and we worked with the airlines to develop a five-year financial plan, and the results of that is a proposed, and this is our next item we'll talk about, a proposed 4% annual increase in landing fees and terminal rent, and I'll go over that in just a minute. So why is it a good idea that we do this? The airlines acknowledge that our rate structures are low, and they've approved the plan. The airlines like the predictability of a multi-year pricing plan. Here's what happens. So often, airports do not do a long-term plan like this, and all of a sudden, they'll go to the airline and say, we have a whole lot of deferred maintenance. We have a whole lot of projects we need to do that, guess what? We haven't been staying on top of. And all of a sudden, they hit the airline with a 10%, 15%, 20% bump, and the airlines go, whoa. We want you to take care of your facility, because we don't want big price tags later on, because you have deferred maintenance. But we want that smoothed out over the years. So we have developed a 10-year plan with, on where we see the airport going financially, but from a pricing structure, only five years. Because as soon as you get further out, it gets a little bit, it's more estimation. The city does not incur any additional obligation than we already have to make sure we provide a safe, secure, and efficient facility. Airfares are based on market demand and competition, and they are not driven by the rates and charges at all. And I think that's an important point to make. The airlines, they have to make money. If they don't, they're going to pull their airplane out of here and go somewhere else where they can make money, and their airfares are going to be based on what the market bears. And they know what that is. And I know all of us have been there. We've checked on prices, and it's always changing. They know what they're doing, and they, if it's too high, people aren't going to fly with them. If it's too low, they're not meeting their margins. And so they're very sophisticated. They're very astute to that. I did a brief presentation to the chamber on an incentive program yesterday, and we made that point that they, it's a market-driven business. The airlines used to go into market because they want the market share. They want to dominate. They want to be the airline of choice out of that market. You don't do that anymore. Now it's profit-driven, which is what most businesses, which most free-market businesses Little bit of history here. Our landing rate fee has not been increased since '09. The terminal rate has, was consolidated with a slight increase in '14. Part of that had been '09. We will continue to discount our rates through the five-year projection period, meaning we're not asking the airlines for full cost recovery. There's other sources of revenue we have to help offset their costs of operating out of the facility. And in the end, our plan keeps us in investment-grade for bond rating in the future. We anticipate in the eight-to-10-year timeframe, we may be back in the market for a significant capital program at the airport. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but behind this table is obviously a lot of numbers. We worked with the airlines to determine what are you going to do in our market next year? We applied growth rates to this. So what this table shows is our revenue stream, our projected operating costs, this is 10 years. And the revenue stream is based on the number of passengers that the airline told us they think they will have, and then we have a growth rate of about 2.3% beyond the first year. Also, this is future dollars. This is dollars with an inflation factor, and I think we factored in 2% inflation factor from year one through year 10. It shows that after operating expenses, there's a certain amount of cash each year that we will have, and that cash is allocated first to ensuring that we have a facilities capital plan that is fulfilled, meaning every year, there are certain things we need to do out in the facility to ensure it's viable and keeps running. And I'll get to that in just a second. The second thing is to make sure we do have our 365 days of reserve on hand at all times. And then the third piece of this is we have a long-term capital need that we need to earmark the dollars for, and so we anticipate that need to come into play in about 2023, 2024 timeframe. And that takes care of all of the revenue that we've got over the next 10 years. What's key to this table is at the bottom. You can see, councilmember Soria, your question, the cost per in plane passengers, it changes as the years go down from $6.72, for example, in FY '16, and all the way out, and so forth and so on. Still, we believe within industry standards, and below that, it says airline costs as a percentage of revenue. It hovers right around 4%, and that's key. We want to stay under that metric. And we work with the airlines on this, and they know what that metric is, and we told them our goal is to stay well below the industry standard. And then, of course, lastly, at the very bottom of this chart, debt service coverage ratio, and this is very key to ensuring that we have investment-grade rating for bonds. And you'll notice what we did there is we says, well, if we do this five-year rate plan, here's what our coverage is going to be. And when you get into the out-years of 2025, 2026, you can see we're still investment-grade. And if we don't do the rate plan, you can see in the red, in the far lower right corner, we don't, we're not quite there. So it's a very carefully crafted plan that the airlines understand and support. Very quickly, when I talk about capital, we have boilers. Part of the FY '17 is designed to replace some of the boilers. They're starting to time out. Chillers, we rebuilt one this year. We're going to do another one next year. Parking lot maintenance. Loading bridges, we're upgrading all of our loading bridges to keep them operational for the foreseeable future. Charging stations, we talked about that yesterday. We'll be seeing these late summer, early fall. And I'll finish with this. This is just kind of a last-minute slide I created and put in there just to give you a sense of what happens at airports. You know, this actually is an approximation of our FY '17 budget. $35.3 million comes in. These categories, we get it from rent, from parking, from concessions, landing fees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can see, and then the bottom of the table, that's where it goes. 37% for administration and personnel, long-term capital contributions, meaning some major projects down the road, about 12%. O and M, 10%, so forth and so on. So this just kind of gives you a snapshot of where we're at. I have got staff here, my finance staff. We're prepared for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kevin. Well done. Easy to follow. Compliments and kudos to your team. It sounds like you've done everything by the book. You kept the costs and everything as low as possible, and I think the theory is to provide the best service, but also to entice more airlines to come to Fresno. And this program seems to fit that bill pretty darn good, so well done. Excellent. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the airport's workshop? I'm sorry, it's a workshop. We do not take that out to the public. I apologize. So we'll come to the dais. We have member Soria.
I just have one quick question, Kevin. Thank you for your presentation. So I know that you mentioned that there are some capital projects planned out. So the fees that you guys are proposing in terms of the increases, that will cover all the capital project needs that exist over the life of these fees going up, or have you guys taken that into account?
They do. The proposed fee increases will net the airport about $180,000 a year. I mean, that's not a huge amount of money compared to our overall budget, so, but that will, that is part of the overall plan to make sure that year in, year out, we're able to execute our capital facilities program, meaning every year, we do some things out there just to keep the facility up and running. And then plus, we have an annual contribution we make to long-term capital. In other words, this is, these are projects that we anticipate we're going to need fairly significant work in the eight-to-10-year timeframe from now. And we have actually a detailed analysis of what that might look like. So our revenue stream, which this will include, this fee structure, is to contribute towards that as well.
And so we should be fine. Do we have, I know in other parts of the city, we have a tremendous need with deferred maintenance. How is that in the airport?
We have no deferred maintenance. We really, you know, year in, year out, we budget approximately, aside from the grants we get for the capital work out on the taxiways and runways and things like this, we budget approximately, and it changes every year, about $1.5 million just to take care of the facilities and do the things that we need to do. For example, when you saw the pictures of having to replace boilers or the chillers and things like this. So we, some years, a little less than that, some years, more than that, but when you look over our 10-year plan, that's about the average, and that's historically about what we've been spending.
Those were all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. The screen is clear. Before you leave, we'll move on to item 2B, which is a resolution for the 526th Amendment to the master fee schedule. It's your opportunity again.
Thank you. And this is a follow-up item to the workshop. This is actually a master fee schedule item to execute the five-year plan. Just a few points I want to make on this one, and I know I just made them earlier. I'll just kind of reiterate them specifically for this item, is that the airlines really do support this plan, because they want to make sure that we are a viable enterprise, safe, efficient, secure, and meets their needs. When I say their needs, because they, they're operating out of the facility. We're providing the facility that they operate out of without the financial burden of deferred maintenance, and that's key. And we want to ensure that we have the ability to fund necessary long-term capital needs, and it's financially attainable. It's possible. And when we do our 10-year plan, this is possible. And I will tell you, before we went through this exercise, I didn't know. I know we're going to do some major work out there within 10 years. Do we even have the capability of doing it? This exercise has told you, yes, we do, which means we're healthy. This exercise has told you, yes, we do, which means we're, we're healthy. We're healthy. The last thing I wanted to mention on this item is that our service to Mexico is our strongest growth, strongest growth area. 11% of our traffic is going to Guadalajara and beyond. And we have, obviously you are aware of our efforts to try and get port of entry status, which means CBP will be paying their own salaries instead of us paying their salaries. But because we're not there yet and because we're required to be self-sustaining, we have one of the highest arrival fees that the airlines pay in the country. It's $14 per person. But because of that growth, we are proposing as part of this effort to reduce that down to 12. And we've already talked to the airlines about that. They're very excited about it. They are continuing to try and push for as many seats in our market as they possibly can within the constraints of customs. So it's a great partnership. We don't even know what the, what the potential is of that service because we are currently limited by customs. They just work one shift. And they do that at many airports. Even at San Jose, it's just one shift. And not too long ago, San Jose wanted to have an international flight to the Pacific Rim, and they were denied because it was not during that shift. So CBP really does, in a sense, control air service on an international scale. Anyway, so I think that's a good story on the international side. So with that, I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that is a great story. We'll take this out to the public. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this item? That is 2B. Please come forward and, and give us your name and address. Seeing none, back to the council. And we have Member Quintero up first.
Hey, Kevin. I heard you mention port of entry status. I thought Fresno has, had been designated as a port of entry in the 80s.
My understanding is, was, and, and they had, they had one officer. They were stationed downtown. And anytime a flight came in, and it usually is a charter or maybe it was cargo activity, they would run out, out to the airport. They, they, that doesn't exist anymore. We were, we were required to sign a user fee agreement back in 2006 when we started our international service. And that's a mode that customs has gotten into recently. And I've heard this story time and again with other airports. So, yeah, we are, we are not the port of entry that we used to be. And it's definitely been a challenge to try and get them to come around. And we were, are working on the, on the federal level on this. There's some, there's some bills going through from Department of Homeland Security that's compelling customs to prioritize airports with more than 75,000 arrivals, which we in Orange County, the only two in the United States will meet that criteria. So we're hopeful that's kind of another step to get, to meet that goal.
As I recall, when it was first designated as such, I mean, there was a big thing, deal about it in that, you know, it, it would, it would help us a lot because then they wouldn't have to just go to LA or San Francisco, you know, for, for that type of thing. And it would help diversify our economy here and also be able to attract, you know, some of the big businesses for warehousing and that type of thing. Because we were looking at doing warehousing as a, as a big push in industrial areas. And it was all going to come together. And then for some reason or another, I guess it fell by the wayside. And, you know, it's, it's just kind of been lingering there. And here we are talking about trying to improve the economy. I mean, what is, what does it take to, to get that going again?
You know, every time I have a discussion with port of entry with customs, you know, their response is, well, if you can get Congress to appropriate us more money, then we'll consider it. You know, for us-
That's why we have congressmen.
Yeah. What's that?
That's why we have congressmen.
That's right. And I will tell you, all of our congressional delegations 100% behind this. I mean, Costa, Valadeo, Nunez, I've met with them. I've been in their offices. But it's a process. But I will say this, the fact that we do have the facility there and we do have staffing of 10-plus people over there compared to the one that we used to have, it is much easier now for folks, I mean, the commercial air service aside, when you talk about, you know, the cargo and businesses and charters and so forth, it's much easier for them to be accommodated now than it was back, say, in the 80s or 90s or early 2000s. Just because there's much more staffing. And I will tell, locally, customs and border protection has been very receptive. They've been very cooperative regardless of what the need is. Aside from the international flights, they've been able to accommodate them. The issue with port of entry is more of the airport having to pay their salaries versus all other airports in the United States with regularly scheduled air service do not have to pay their salaries. That's, that's the issue that we're dealing with. So they're, they're getting double the revenue. They're getting revenue from us to pay their salaries. They're getting the $17.50 for, for each passenger that arrives that pays all their salaries at every other airport. So they're getting double the revenue. So who knows where that's money is going? And we've made that point clear. And in fact, it's double dipping.
Well, would it take something, I mean, a, a letter from the council or administration to our congressional folk saying, you know, we need some help here, folks. It's economics.
Yeah. And we have that. We have a letter from mayors. We have letters from state assembly members. We have letters from congressmen. We have letters from both of our senators, Feinstein and Boxer. And it's a process and it's challenging.
How many years you been working on that, Kevin?
10. Since we started. They have minimum criteria. And we met the minimum criteria within six months back in, by the end of 2006. We met their criteria to qualify for port of entry.
If we got the full designation as a port of entry would economically, would, how helpful would that be for us?
It would be huge. There's, there's a couple of things we would do. This, this arrival fee we have at $14 that now we're proposing to bring to 12, okay? That would go down even further. Typically, at these airports that have port of entry, the arrival fees reflect just the O and M costs, four, five, maybe $6. So we are, you know, double. So we would lower that back down for the airlines.
Okay. Well, if you've sent letters to all those folks, what's been their reply?
Talked to your congressman about getting us more money.
That's who you sent the letter to?
Yeah. Well, well, we've sent, the letters have gone from congressmen and state senators and local entities to CBP. And they just say, we don't have the resources. That's the reply. We don't have the resources. And, and they'll say, well, if we use the resources. And for us, it's about $750,000 a year. Well, it's like five officers. So what, we can have five less officers working out of San Francisco and-
Sounds like a pinball machine.
It is a pinball machine.
They're just sending you from one to the other, back and forth.
Well, we're not giving up. In fact, I was, I just, a member of Costa's office reached out to me two days ago. And, you know, they're doing markup bills right now for Department of Homeland Security. And there's language in there compelling customs to do this. But they didn't go so far as to require them to do this, which we were hoping they would. We had proposed language says they are required. And that didn't, just didn't make it through the process in Washington. But at least now there's some language. The significance of that is the entire House of Representatives is sending a message to customs. Hey, look, you got these airports out there. Take care of them.
I'm just wondering how much money we've lost all this time. But that's okay. That's for another day. Thank you. I'm good.
It's close to $5 million.
Member Dan.
You're up.
Good morning to-
Thank you, Paul. Just want to say thank you for going back to Russ Whitmer and with you guys. And you, Kevin, have done a great job keeping the airport viable. And in my time in this council, you guys have had one of the best-run operations of any division, certainly of the enterprise divisions. And kind of following up on what Sal said, I know we had the Hawaii flight for a while, and we still have the international flight. And I know it's difficult to add on to that. But, you know, most people don't realize, the first thing you see when you come to Fresno, the first impression you get is the Fresno airport. So it's really important that, you know, we make that look its best and offer as many amenities as possible. But as we go, go into the future and grow, is there a space limitation as far as, you know, how many, we have to extend the runway? We had double, what's our solution? What's, how do we expand?
Two ways to answer that question. One, this coming fiscal year, and it'll be about an 18-month process. We'll probably kick it off in August. We are going to be doing a master plan for the airport. It's going to look at the airport and its projected growth for 20 years. From my, my personal opinion, from my expertise, from my experience, I would say the airfield is sufficient to handle the projected growth of this airport over the next 20 years in terms of length of runways, the taxiway configuration, the capacity of the airfield, we're there. I would say, I would say not only a 20-year window, but even in a 10-year window, it's questionable and probably even less, maybe even eight years, that, do we have enough gates? Do we have enough space in the ticket lobby? Is the baggage claim enough? Parking, do we have enough? And I would, my guess is no, we don't. The 10-year plan I, I laid out accommodates that. I'm anticipating, and once we get through the master plan process, we'll have a better feel for this. But I'm anticipating in eight to 10 years, we're going to be looking at, in a neighborhood, and this is, this is $20,000, $200 million project. I'm anticipating that to expand gates, to expand parking. And this is a fairly conservative growth rates. And we will monitor this every single year as we get closer. So, so facility-wise, I think we're going to need some work. Airfield-wise, we may be okay.
Because one of the arguments of high-speed rail is that within time, a lot of airports will run out of expansion and people will need to look for alternate ways of transportation. Do you see any impact of high-speed rail on our traffic flights from an economic point of view?
No, I really don't. I, I, you know, when, when somebody wants to fly beyond Los Angeles, let's say, for example, whether it's to New York or whether it's to Europe or to the Pacific Rim, the airlines want to sell you a ticket out of Fresno. I could see people traveling high-speed rail to Los Angeles, to San Francisco because they're doing business there, because they're visiting there. Maybe they're vacationing there and they're going back and forth on a regular basis. The traffic that we have, it's not a huge number of traffic, just there and back, flying. Either you're driving or maybe you're taking Amtrak. But there's some people that do fly. To the extent that people fly, that maybe they will take high-speed rail to go into Los Angeles. That'll free up seats for the airlines to sell to go to New York, to go to Hawaii, to go to Tokyo. So the airlines will probably like that. The other part of it is that internationally, and I will tell you that 71% of the people who fly out of our region use our airport. That's a pretty good number, 71%. But when you carve out the international flights, it's, it's lower than that. It's something lower than that, which means if you're flying, for example, to Beijing, more people are driving to LA, parking in LA, and taking the direct flight to Beijing than they are going out of Fresno. There's still a number of people going out of Fresno to Beijing, but they're driving. So I could see high-speed rail say, you know, I'm not going to drive to LA. I'm still, I'm still going to fly out of LA direct. I'm not going to fly out of Fresno. There's always a present, so they're going to take high-speed rail, maybe, direct to LAX, connect in instead of driving. So that's an equality thing, too.
But isn't a factor, when I take trips back to Hawaii, I always take the flight from Fresno to wherever. I don't drive because it's just too much of an inconvenience. And generally, it hardly, you know, on a package deal, it hardly adds that much money to it. I'm just curious if, you know, we don't know what the final model will be on high-speed rail as far as cost. But I'm sure that'll be determining factor. If it's $200 to take a train and then you add $100 more to your ticket to fly, it's, it'd be obvious which way you're going to go.
I will tell you, the, the master plan effort that we're going to kick off, and we will be coming to council for the consultant agreement for that a little later this summer. But the master plan effort, high-speed rail will be a component of that effort. In other words, what is the impact of high-speed rail on the growth of the airport? That will be looked at as part of our master plan effort.
Okay. Yeah. Because that's obviously a major capital project in California that'll impact, certainly impact Fresno. And the final question, maybe the city manager, because I'm, you have no jurisdiction over the Chandler, correct? Or do you?
We do.
Oh, well, then I'll ask you. Because I've heard, you know, suggestions about expanding, you know, the runway at Chandler to accommodate perhaps corporate jets as we, downtown develops, high-speed rail station and a lot of other improvements down there, that one day that might be a viable option to, to expand Chandler from kind of a backwater, you know, single-engine to corporate type of jets coming in.
We are also going to be embarking on a master plan for Chandler, which has not been done since 1999. This August same time, we'll probably come to you with this, two items, one's for Chandler, one's for the big airport. Anyway, for the master plan for Chandler, we will also be looking at that connectivity to high-speed rail, runway lengths, what the forecasting usage of Chandler is. And Chandler is a very key airport in our region because it's considered a reliever airport to the main, main airport. So the FAA supports whatever needs to be done at Chandler, especially as a downtown airport, close proximity to the business centers of, of the city of Fresno. So we are going to be undertaking that effort too this year.
Yeah. Even the Nordstrom deal, which has kind of cooled off lately. But, you know, Nordstrom plant, if you could take a corporate jet directly to, to the Chandler, you're talking about a, what a five, 10-minute drive to the site. So.
That's true. And then a sidebar to that is later on this month, we propose bringing in a, an updated incentive program. And one thing we don't have in our current incentive program that we are proposing is a incentive relating to cargo activities. Meaning if, if the carriers with FedEx or UPS were to have a need to increase their capacities or another one come in, because of, for example, a Nordstrom's or another entity that has such volume, we'll have incentives for the cargo operators.
Yeah. Yeah. You're right. Logistically, that would be cost-effective to have that airport, to have the capacity to bring those kind of planes in.
Right.
So that's going to be included in, in the master plan then?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Member Quintero, you had a follow-up statement?
Kevin, I got one quick question. You said that there's been letters to the, the Congress folks and all that, you know, regarding this port of entry deal. Have you, in submitting those letters, have, have, go ahead.
Yeah. We, we-
Tell me in two minutes or less. Been taking a lot of time.
How about a minute? We, we submitted a, a, a very thin, back in 2009, application for port of entry. And it was immediately denied with a half-page letter. I put a port of entry application together in 2014. I did an economic benefit study for the Mexico service.
Did you, did my, okay, that's what I wanted to know. Did you get letters of support, like from the chambers, the EDC, and submit all those with?
This package has got letters of support, not only from both senators, all of our congressional delegation from the House, state assembly members, Chamber of Commerce, the ag industry, the, the travel industry. It's a very robust package, if you will. And this all went into customs and border protection. And I also get copies of this to our congressional delegation and say, hey, look, this is what we're doing. We need more support.
So you got back one of them form letters that said, thank you for your application?
Actually, on the 2014 package, the one that, very robust package, including that economic benefit study, zero response. And I've had conversation with our congressman about that. I says, look, what, what's, you know. But I have talked to customs and border protection a number of times since then. They're aware of it. They've got it. It's at headquarters. And I will tell you, our airport and John Wayne Airport in Orange County are both very actively pushing this issue with customs and border protection. We are the only two airports in the United States with regularly scheduled air service with this volume that has this financial burden.
Okay. In the application, did you put down FAT or FYI?
FAT. That might confuse with FYI.
Member Soria.
So just one question that I had. Thank you again for the presentation. So on the fee schedule that we're going to vote today, are we looking at, just for the airlines, we're not looking within the interior of the airport and folks that use our space, that we lease space to?
We are. We, we, well, there's two parts. One of it's the landing fees, and that's just the airlines. The other part is the terminal rent. Now, the lion's share of the terminal rent is the airlines. But there are other stakeholders in there that, 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 for example, TSA rents office space. When you look at the restaurant and the gifted news, they don't rent office space because it's on a concession agreement. Customs and border protection, well, we pay, we pay for their space. So there's not a lot, but it's primarily the airlines. it's primarily the airlines that, that are impacted by this.
So, the space, the, I guess, the lease agreement for the spaces, I didn't, I didn't see them reflected on the schedule. Is there a section?
Uh, no. The, the, we have individual airline operating agreements, and in those agreements, each one's different, say Delta, United, okay? In those agreements, there's, there's diagrams and maps. Okay, you've got this office space in the lower level, and then you've got this office space behind the ticket counters, and everyone's a little different. So, the actual agreement we have with the airline identifies their rental space, right? And in the agreement, it says, you will pay the rental rate per the city's adopted master fee schedule.
Okay.
Some airports don't have that. Some airports just say, here's your rental, in the agreement, right? They don't have a master fee schedule.
And does that include also, like, the Starbucks and the restaurants in there?
No.
That's separate?
No. They, they don't rent space. They, they occupy space, but we get a percent of their gross revenue-
Okay.
-for, for a revenue stream. So, we don't get rent from them. We get their, for example, it may be 8% gross revenue for food and beverage, and it may be, you know, 10% for, you know, gifted news. So, it's a, it's a gross revenue, so it's not based on square footage.
And does the gross revenue that we get from these different, have we done analysis? It is meeting our, our cost of being able to letting them operate in our facility?
Yes, it is. It's, it's, it's a, it's a very, it's a favorable deal for them. It's, it's, it's providing us a revenue stream that's enabling us to be, it's part of the whole big, all the different revenue we get to make it work for us. And, yeah, it works for them, and it works for us. I mean-
When was the last time that it was adjusted, or that we negotiated what we were receiving from the, their profits?
Like, for example, on the gifted news, for example. It's been, trying to remember when we went to council. We did go to, when they opened up the new Starbucks, we went to council and did an adjustment to their rate base. But, but, for example, if it says 6% for food and beverage, then it's just 6%. So, the more business they do, the more revenue we get, the less business they do, the less revenue we get based on the economy. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. The screen is clear. Fantastic presentation. I mean, it's so exciting to think about high-speed rail, corporate jets, Chandler becoming a, a larger, more accommodating airport, what you're doing out there and your team. This is truly, truly exciting, and it's, you guys, that's great, a great presentation, very informative. Please don't give up. Keep after that customs group, and we'll win. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 2B. Second, my member Brand, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes 6-0 with member Baines absent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next is item 2C, actions pertaining to the Friant Road overlay. This is Public Works.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President, Council members. My name is Randy Bell with the Public Works Department. The item before you today is the Friant Road overlay between Neese Avenue and Fresno Street. This project will resurface Friant Road to extend the lifespan of the roadway, and will also improve curb ramps to bring them up to ADA standards. Staff has determined that the category, that a categorical exemption is appropriate for this project, based on Section 15301(c) of the SECO guidelines, which exempts the repair, maintenance, and minor alteration of existing facilities. Five bids were received on May 3, and Cal Valley Construction was found to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid of $558,032. Staff recommends council adopt the finding of categorical exemption per staff's determination, and award a construction contract in the amount of $558,032 for the Friant Road overlay to Cal Valley Construction of Fresno as a lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Public Works Director or his designee to sign the contract on behalf of the city. This ends my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Well done. Take us to the public. Anyone in the public wish to participate in the dialogue with this item 2C. Seeing none, back to the dius, and member Soria?
I am.
He didn't punch up. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Motion by member Brand. Second by member Quintero. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0 with members Brandow and Baines absent. Moving on to item 2E, resolution for the 51st Amendment to the annual appropriations for the Public Works Department. Good morning, Director Moser.
Good morning, Council President, Council members. Scott Moser, Public Works Department. The item before you is primarily a financial housekeeping item, but it does require council action as the dollars cross between funds in the city budget. This item does not represent any new spending by the department, but it's a reallocation between two different funds, the first being the indirect cost recovery fund, and then our operating funds. A year ago, council may recall during the budget discussions, really a new initiative for the city, in that we've worked with the U.S. Department of Transportation to, for the first time, and this is a rare thing amongst valley cities in particular, and counties, to recover indirect costs for the city on our federal and state grant programs. This, the budget for this year assumed that we'd be able to implement 100% of our consultant recommendations, and for the lion's share, that is true. This is a relatively small amount in the, in the big picture, but what this addresses is some items that were ultimately deemed not eligible for indirect cost recovery by the U.S. Department of Transportation, but instead would rather be direct operating costs. If there are further questions, staff's available for any questions, but we'd recommend approval in order that we can really close the books on this fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public wish to come forward and address this issue? Now's your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, back to the dius. Screen is clear. Do we have a motion to approve item 2E? Motion by member Brand. Second by me. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0 with members Brandow, Baines absent. Moving to item 2F, resolution regarding unbudgeted revenues and increase in appropriations for the Fresno Fire Department. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Council President, Council members. In front of you today is a, the Fire Department is requesting an amendment to FY16's account and unbudgeted revenues, and the corresponding expenditures incurred, or to be incurred in fiscal year, by fiscal year-end. These revenues are various, from various sources totaling $1.159 million, excuse me, and were received after the adoption of the FY16 budget. Be happy to answer any detailed questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the community that's here in City Hall wish to come forward and discuss this matter? Here's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll come back to the dius. Member Soria?
Thank you, Chief. Just have a couple of questions. So, this wasn't included in the original budget. How did we pay for the cost before receiving these funds?
Sure. The majority of these costs were from the OES, or the out-of-county assignments. We pay our members, and we get reimbursed after the fact by the state and/or in federal government through the Forestry Service. We had put, and then there was other subsequent unbudgeted repairs, which I believe are identified and listed in the staff report. We hadn't been accounting that way in the past, and so, the revenues weren't put in. And so, going forward, we made that adjustment in FY17's budget, where the revenues will be identified, but also the appropriations in our per's account will be identified equally.
So, what were the, what was the difference in terms of what happened different from the previous year? I know I, I read the staff report, and I guess there were some additional fires or-
I believe, in the past, we had been just moving money down into that account, so it wouldn't be such a large amount, and we didn't do that this year. So, we hadn't been, we've been doing this consistently in the past. We just didn't transition those funds down. So, it wasn't as a significant request as it has been in the past.
And so, you mentioned that this is already allocated and noted in this new budget-
Yes.
-that we're going to be voting on in the next couple of weeks.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The screen is clear. Do we have a motion on this item? Motion by member Soria. Second by me. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 6-0 with member Baines absent. Moving on to item 2G. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to item 2G, authorizing payment of reclamation for purchase of Tier 1 and 2 unreleased restoration flows from Millerton Lake. Ooh, that's a mouthful.
That's a lot.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President, City Council. This agenda item is to purchase Tier 1 and Tier 2 unreleased restoration flows from the, from Millerton Lake. After two years of 0% allocation, the Bureau has been working with us, the Friant contractors, locally here with FID, to identify ways to get water here into the city, into the other contractors. If you look at the, if you look at a cross-section of the reservoir, it has different kinds of water in it. I'm finding the language here with the Bureau. They call it different colors. The Tier 1, the unreleased restoration flows are a color of water. It's water that's not going down to the restoration, San Joaquin Restoration Program, because they've received water through other mechanisms, and now this is now available to us. Earlier in the year, late last year and earlier this year, you guys, the council approved a resolution for 215 water, which would be flood release water. In talking with the Bureau, what we would like to do going forward is bring resolutions to you every year. That would be 215 water, unreleased restoration flow water, and any other colors of water that they've identified that we need, we need to have these documents in place. The Tier 1 water is about 2,317 acre-feet of water, $60 an acre-foot. And the Tier 2 unreleased restoration flows is for 5,625 acre-feet of water at $120, $150 an acre-foot. On, the official Bureau reclamation declaration this year is for 30, 39, is, excuse me, 65% allocation out of Millerton. So, 65% is what we were scheduled to receive. That's 39,000 acre-feet total for the city of Fresno, based on our Class 1. We have been working hard with the Bureau and others to try and get more water into the city with these contracts and some other things we did earlier. We'll wind up with 58, almost 59,000 acre-feet of water this year, when the, the number established was 39,000. So, we'll be about 19,000 acre-feet to the good above what was originally authorized. So, we've been working hard to get the water. Now, they just require that we pass a resolution that we're, we are in agreement that we want the Tier 1 and the Tier 2 unreleased restoration flows. This is a companion to the one you did earlier for the flood release flows that didn't quite come this year. And again, moving forward, we'll work with the Bureau that this will be a resolution we bring to the council, 215 water, unreleased restoration flow water, and we'll just keep these things kind of moving. So, with that, I'll, available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone in the public wish to come forward and discuss this item? Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, back to the dius. Member Soria?
Tell me, I just have one question. So, the purchase is going to give us 39,000 acre-feet?
I'm sorry. So, the official declaration from the Bureau is 39,000 acre-feet. So, that's water that they've already said we're going to make available to the city.
Okay.
They've also made additional water, a different color, available to the city, called these unreleased restoration flows. The, the 39,000 is just our Class 1 contract water. They're making additional water available to the city under the color of unreleased restoration flows. 2,300 earlier, and then another 5,600. So, about 8,000 additional acre-feet that we'll be able to access this year.
And what can we use that water for the, for the unreleased-
Unreleased restoration flows. So, that is water that is pretty much, we can use, do, surface water treatment plants, groundwater recharge. The other feature of this water is that they will let us carry it over if we want it to. So, we're working with FID to determine, because we're not out of the drought yet. I mean, the, we've got a lot of rainfall, but we didn't get all the snowpack. And because we didn't get all the snowpack, we didn't get all the runoff, we didn't get the reservoirs full. So, we're working with FID right now to talk about, do we maybe just carry this water over, so we can have a surplus going into next year. And we have the option of parking it behind Millerton, we have the option of parking it behind Pine Flat. So, those are the things we're, we're looking at doing, just because we're not sure where this drought might head. So, we may bank it behind, behind one of the reservoirs. So, that's one of the options we can do. Or we just run it to our surface water plants, and, or recharge it. So, those are the things that we're looking at doing.
So, if we decide to bank it, that means that we're still going to go to use our groundwater?
We're still using, yeah, because we're, unfortunately, we're, we're limited on how much surface water we can deliver to the city, because we just got the 30 MGD water plant. Ideally, if we had the other water plant online now, we'd, we'd be running this water through that facility.
Okay. And so, once we have the bigger plant online, which is going to be, what, 20-
2018, March 2018, it'll be ready for service.
You're confident that we'll receive enough water to-
Right. So, here we are, first year out of the, first year out of the drought. Last year, total surface water for the city was 42,000 acre-feet. This year, first year out of the drought, well, we're not out of the drought, first kind of year where we got normal rainfall. With the, we're calling it gymnastics, with the gymnastics we did with the Bureau this year, plus our FID entitlement, we'll have about 128,000 acre-feet of water available to us this year. To run the water plants, we need 110. So, we, this would be a beautiful year.
Okay. And so, since we don't have the other plant online, we're looking at parking it, you said?
We can either, so this water, we can either park it, carry it over next year, we can transfer it, we can sell it, we can recharge it. It's pretty, the Bureau's been very generous about what we can do with this water.
And so, do you, does the department know what it's going to do? Or how, when will you guys determine?
In about two weeks, we're coming to you with an idea.
With an idea?
But we're gonna, and we're working, and we're doing that in partnership with the Fresno Irrigation District. So, Gary and I are meeting about once every other week, just to kind of see how the water's coming off the watershed, see how the reservoir's filling up, see how Bureau is making water available, and we're kind of making our, making our determinations on how we want to use the water.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The screen is clear. I think member Brand wanted to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0 with member Baines absent. On to item 2H, authorizing application for affordable housing through the mayor's office.
Good morning, Council President, City Council. The item before you is pretty straightforward. It's authorizing the resolution for the city to apply for affordable housing and sustainable communities grant and loan funds for the South Stadium Transit Oriented Development Project to the California Strategic Growth Council and the California Housing and Community Development Department. The city has jointly applied for these funds with Mehmet Noyan and Terrence Fraser, also known as Noyan Fraser LLC, for just over $5.73 million that would support building both affordable housing within their mixed-use project on Fulton and Inyo Streets, as well as various transportation and streetscape improvements to Van Ness and Inyo Streets near the site. The project, there's a lot of more project details, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
That was very rapid. Thank you. So, anyone in the community that wishes to come forward and discuss this item, please do so now. And seeing none, back up to the dius. Screen is clear. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by member Olivier, second by member Brand. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 6-0 with member Baines absent. Thank you very much. So, next is our 10 o'clock items. We're a little bit early. And, so, we'll go to unscheduled communication, and I have a card here or two from Mary Estor Correa. Here's your opportunity to address this for three minutes. And please give us your name and address, and proceed with your comments.
Good morning. Buenos dias y aloha. Okay, I'm, I'm going to refer to page 3, which I'm struggling with the high fees that I'm being charged for my water and disposal. And I've been out of water for, since I got here in March. And I was here last year, and I didn't understand what these acronyms stand for. I don't, I don't even know if you guys have been looking at this chart, this bill that I've been getting- I don't even know if you guys have been looking at this chart, this bill that I've been getting. It's on page three, and I've just been asking Brian Reams, what are you charging me so much money for? I don't understand, and I don't, and finally, I talked to the administrat, uh, city manager, Brianna, and then a supervisor who is Lydia, and we're trying to come to a meeting of the minds why I have such an outrageously high bill and no water. But come to find out, if you look at the chart, I have been paying back water bill that tenants don't pay and that they don't pay the rent, so for the past three years, I've had my, my home, my second home here, that I was born and raised here, and this is my, my roots are here, my fam, my whole family lives here, my friends, long, long friends. Anyways, if you look at this, I'm sure you guys, I don't understand it, and I've asked Brian Reams, what are you charging me so much money for? All my neighbors are helping me, and they pay for the water, sewer, and garbage sixty to seventy-eight dollars a month. I have a duplex. One is supposed to be rented to help pay the mortgage and the taxes and the insurance and the upkeep, but tenants don't pay the rent, so I'm stuck with all that. And the second one is boarded up, my house, thirty-four zero three, thirty-four zero seven East Iowa. I live in it. I come and I venture out to visit my friends, my families and everything, and it's not happening. Now with the new law that you guys passed, I have to board, I can't board up my house and, and leave it empty anymore. I have to rent it. In order for me to get all this done, I need water, and I've talked to Glenn Olivier, I've called him on the phone, because he's in, I know, my whole family lives here, and I advocated for him for getting, and he hasn't returned my calls, he doesn't do anything. I go to his office, well, he doesn't care, and he does, I don't know why he hasn't even called me to address this issue. But I've sent out mails to the president and to the, eventually, I'm going to get some results, but I know that you guys are not interested, but I'm advocating for myself, for the senior citizens, disabled, and, and I have to have the water, and now, hopefully, we can come to a meeting of the minds. They want money, money, money. Look at the, and I didn't know what I was being charged for. I'm being charged for homeless people breaking the water meters, breaking them, and I found out that they have keys to the, the, if you don't pay your water bill, they turn it off. And then the homeless people come through the alleys, they have these keys, these long rods that have some kind of stuff in the little pawns in the end, and they turn the water on and they go take a bath and they steal water, and doing so-
You have to wrap it up pretty quick, Mary. Please.
Okay. The water meter has been broken, and, and it's been broken, I understand, three times, so I'm being charged. If you look at the, at the schedule, I can't, it's, they charged me four hundred dollars for the water meter that was broken, they charged me another three hundred and something, and three hundred and something, and then I'm getting paid, I'm getting something that says here, off, off-cycle bill, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, four hundred, and then now, it also, I'm getting some kind of, I'm getting delinquent fee, which is off-cycle bill, over a hundred dollars a month.
Ms. Correa, I think Mr. Councilmember Olivier wanted to address that for you.
Yeah.
You have a moment, thank you.
Oh, thank you, finally. What? You have something for me?
Yeah, what I'm going to do is call on the, on the city manager, because there is a solution that, that has been offered.
Well, thank you so much, yeah, because I'm talking, I'm going to go directly to the, I think Brian, Brian, Brian Reams is scamming me-
Right.
And he's done it, he's doing it to me, he's done it to others, and he's going to keep on doing it, and I've already called for an audit.
Let me have, you know, Ms., Mrs. Smith is our city manager, and she-
Thank you.
Some news for you.
Oh, okay. Our, our Department of Public Utilities is going to be out to your property either today or tomorrow to drop the meter in, so that, so going forward, you'll know exactly what the, the usage is. And I do have a copy of a contract that Mr. Reams has, has provided whereby there's monthly pay, there's payments of fifty dollars a month to bring you, you current in your charges. So tomorrow, once you agree to these payment terms, the water can be turned back on and, and you can move forward, and you will be charged monthly based on your, on the metered rate.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I don't see why I should be, I already given them a two hundred dollars in a cashier's check yesterday, or day before, and then they want more money, more money. But I, I pay my bills, and every time I come here, this is my second home, I put on my PG&E and pay, go and pay the water bill, and for some reason, the past couple of years, I've been scammed, and, and I'm going to-
Well, Ms. Correa, I think we have an option for you, so-
I'm going to go right now to talk to Brianna, and, yeah, I'm going to go right now to talk to them.
Thank you.
And then I'll be back. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next-
Finally, I'm getting some, some progress.
Next, we have a-
You have to, you have to sign the contract for repayment.
Well, I have to look at it first. I'm not going to sign something that I don't think I can manage, okay?
Okay.
I'm going to go look at it right now. Thank you.
Thank you again. The next card is from Gary DuKell. Gary, are you here? If you'd like to come forward and address us on Amtrak, this is your opportunity. Apparently Gary is not here, so with that, we'll close unscheduled communication, and we'll take a six-minute break. We have a ten o'clock timed item. Thank you. We have a timed item for ten AM, to hearing to adopt resolution and ordinances to annex territory in District Four. Good morning.
Good morning, President Capriolio. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing to consider a community facilities district. It's an annexation, I believe, number sixty-six to existing District Number Eleven. This is a new subdivision in the area of Clinton and Temperance. This is at the request of the developer, and, let's see, the annual amount of the assessment is seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. We have received back approval from all the ballots, and we recommend that you approve this item.
Very good, thank you. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Come up and, you'll have your opportunity. Seeing none, back to the dais. The screen is clear. I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Member Brand. All those in favor? Passes four zero with Members Soria, Olivier, and Baines absent. We have to wait till ten-thirty, Andrew, sorry.
You're too fast.
Ten-fifteen? Oh, yes.
Make your lips move slower.
My colleagues are criticizing efficiency.
The Council President, item four, City Council item, is untimed. It could be taken.
We'll take item-
Item four?
Item four, under City Council. And whoever's here to speak on that, you're more than welcome to make a presentation. Item four, under City Council. Well, now's your time. You're up. It is your opportunity, my friend.
Thank you, and we don't get Frank Sinatra.
Next time.
Background music. Okay, this is a follow-up from our meeting last week, where we discussed the southeast development area of SEDA, that the city's making a statement regarding that the city firmly wants to keep that area within our sphere of influence, and we're also asking our state legislators formally to go to the state legislator and draft legislation to add Fresno and Clovis as the sixth and seventh member of the LAFCO board. So I reckon, I'm making a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Brand, second by Member Brandal. We'll take this out to the public. Anyone from the community wish to address this issue, please come forward, it's your opportunity. We have a speaker, fantastic. Please give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Dave Herb, thirty-two sixty-three East Huntington Boulevard. Retired employee for the city of Fresno and retired County of Madera, LAFCO executive officer, so I know a little bit about what I speak. The issue here you're talking about has to do with state law, which, in my opinion, is pretty clear on the issue, and I think what's going on is an injustice. The city is allowed slash required to develop a general plan for the area, which, in its opinion, relates to its future growth and development. I have been involved in LAFCO, both at the city of Fresno and in Madera County, for years, probably fifteen years. I have never, I have seen many arguments about what area should be included in a city's sphere of influence when it goes beyond the area that is planned urban. I have never seen an argument about what should be included in the city's sphere of influence when it is planned for urban development. So I think you're on good, solid ground here, and as to the issue of requesting that state law be modified to allow Fresno a, two members on the LAFCO Commission, bout time. The city of Fresno has never had a voice on LAFCO, and that's largely a function of the fact that the decision for that is made by the COG Committee, which is made up of all the small cities, and they trade it around amongst themselves, and Fresno never seems to come up in the rotation. Obviously, we have an interest in that, and our interests have been neglected for years. So I commend you on this action, it's long overdue, and in the for what it's worth category, given my background, if there's anything I can do to assist you, you know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and support, we appreciate that.
David, I was gonna, I was gonna ask a question real quick, and I think I was punched up.
Yes, you are first.
So before you sat down, so with your experience on LAFCO, what do you think is the motivation? What, what's your opinion?
LAFCO goes through phases philosophically in how it utilizes the sphere of influence In the beginning, when the requirement for a sphere of influence was first established, most LAFCOs, certainly Fresno's LAFCO, had a very expansive philosophy with regard to sphere of influence. Their concern back then was if it's going to be developed, by God, they wanted to make sure it was developed in the city of Fresno, or in, in the city, regardless of which jurisdiction. And so you had planned urban areas, and you had sphere of influence. There is a push on a statewide basis, and it varies from county to county. LAFCO is a county-based organization, that LAFCO can and should be involved in getting into the business of urban growth management. And sometimes, usually over in the coastal areas, that is interpreted as requiring LAFCO to second-guess the city as to what areas are appropriate for future urbanization. We have never seen that tendency in Fresno County. Apparently, that is beginning to emerge. I'm not conversant in the detailed personal politics of what's going on in SEGA. I don't know to what extent this is a personal political issue, or whether this is a philosophical issue. I imagine if pressed, LAFCO would argue that it is philosophical. The response to that, though, would best be answered by taking a look at growth capacity of the city's general plan and population projections. Nobody ever plans for a hundred thousand growth capacity in a planning period, and provides only a hundred and two thousand capacity for additional growth, because to do so would be to artificially inflate prices because of the supply and demand equation, to the extent that you had a population projection for the next ten years of an additional hundred thousand, and you provided for a capacity for six hundred thousand. Well, then your general plan is, is going so far beyond what population projections say you need, that that invites LAFCO to get into the business of, of second-guessing you. I don't think that's the case in the, the city of Fresno, and so I am a little bit appalled at their action in this regard, because I am firmly believed, despite, I mean, I, for seven years, I ran the city's annexation program, and for ten or fifteen years, I ran the LAFCO program up in Madera County. I'm familiar with, with the issues. But throughout that time, most LAFCOs I've seen, and this is consistent with state law, are of the opinion that by God, if it's going to be urban, it ought to be in the city of Fresno. And since you got me going, I think it's past time that the city of Fresno re-initiate its urban unification program and begin the gradual process of filling in the unincorporated islands in the metropolitan area. There used to be a consensus that if we did that, we would be a stronger, more efficient city, and I believe that fact has not changed, and it's unfortunate that we have walked away from that issue. I know two neighborhoods, one in Mayfair and one in Cowa, that wants to be annexed to the city of Fresno, and we don't have a program to help them move forward. That's unfortunate.
Yeah, I, I agree. Well, I share your appall on the situation that has now happened, so I appreciate that. Maybe you could, I, I believe we'll probably do a resolution. Councilman Brand, originally, last week, I thought you were going to do a resolution to ask our local elected state officials?
It's, the resolution's in there.
That's inside of this?
Yes, there's a detailed resolution that discusses SEDA and the, the need to, to add two members, one for Fresno, one for Clovis.
Yeah. That, by the way, is a common technique that is used in, I don't know the number, but frequently throughout the state, when you have our kind of situation, where you have a major metropolitan area that has never given a seat on, on LAFCO. The remedy for that, this is not a new idea.
Right.
This is a very common idea that is used frequently elsewhere. We've advocated that this be done in the past, and nobody ever kind of wanted to rock the boat to make that happen. I'm glad to see it's-
Yeah, I think Bakersfield did it recently.
Okay, thank you. David, maybe you could, with your qualifications, write a letter to support that resolution, we'll submit that as well.
I'll do that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time. So, I think, you know, last week, when we had the workshop, and then we had council comments right after that, it seemed like there was a real strong consensus to, to keep that land in SEGA, and not, for the city of Fresno not to give that land up, so I'm going to be super supportive of this resolution today, and I hope that, I know the Fresno Bee wrote an article on it since that vote, and so hopefully, the community will understand exactly where the city of Fresno stands on this.
Thank you, Member Brandal. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Although I just wanted to make some brief comments, I think that we've, this has already been previously discussed, I agree with the city of Fresno being part of LAFCO, so resolution is great, I want to just follow up with Lee to see, will you be making phone calls to our legislators to try to figure out if they will take this as a legislative action this year, or maybe in the next legislative year?
Well, since it's a citywide resolution, I think the city manager would probably be the appropriate person to, I mean, I wouldn't have no problem calling, but I think the city manager should probably be- city manager should probably be the person, or city attorney? And a resolution like that, is there, does, is it the city manager, city attorney that makes the request to the legislators?
Typically, once the resolution is done, it could be the manager or the mayor.
Okay, yeah, so, but I would say if anybody, if you know, I know Joaquin Ramula, I would, wouldn't hurt for anybody, all of us, to call and urge our state legislators to act on this.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask, because we'd probably want to put the proposal and the language together. That would be something that we, how we want to see it as proposed to the legislature, and I think it'd be great to talk both to Joaquin and to also Assemblymember Patterson, since you guys have included Clovis. Obviously, the priority for me would be the City of Fresno, but also in looking at who has a better, a better chance of getting a legislative action passed, I think strategically for us, if we really want to make sure that this happens in the next year or so.
Yeah, it's, it'd be obvious that we're gonna need Joaquin Ramula, you know, the, the Democrats are gonna, if we have any chance at all, we'll be through that. And I'm getting Clovis, I'm sure they'll be actively supporting this, will make a little more weight for us, but hopefully, it's something we can get accomplished with our legislators and for a long time coming, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. We have a motion. Thank you, Member Brand for your leadership in getting this going. We just talked about it, it seems like, yesterday, and we're already working on a resolution today, so thank you for that. We have a motion by Member Brand, second by Member Brandal. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 6-0 with Member Baines absent. We'll go to the 10:15 timed item, a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory in District 2.
Good morning, I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing to consider a community facilities district. This is at the request of the landowner. This is a new housing project near Herndon and Golden State Boulevard. It's a benchmark homes project. The annual assessment will be $1,195 per lot. We have received all of the ballots with approval and in support, and we'd recommend your approval of the project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, anyone in the public wish to come forward and discuss this item, please do so. Seeing none, back to the council. The comment screen is clear. Is there a motion? By Councilmember of District 2, Councilmember Brand. Motion to approve. Motion by Member Brand, second by Member Capriolio. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 6-0 with Member Baines absent. This might be a chance to do some housecleaning, since we have about nine more minutes to wait. So the 1:30, Item Number 2, Continued Budget Hearing Overflow, I don't think there's a need for that, so I think we can eliminate that from our 1:30 calendar. Any other housecleaning items any would like to address, or? Well, we'll have 1:30 timed, I'm struck at 1:30 poll item and a ceremonial opportunity. And I think that would.
Council President, on the 10:30 item, the appearance by Kathleen Cruz, if she is here and agrees to go earlier, since it's not an action item, you could advance that one.
Okay. So is Kathleen Cruz? Good morning. If it's okay with you, we could, we could take your situation right now. Is that agreeable with you? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your help there. So if you give us your name and your address, and then you'll, you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Cruz, and my address is 1573 West Dovewood in Fresno, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and participate in local government. The issue I want to discuss is the municipal code enforcement and the proliferation of signs in Fresno. Businesses have a legitimate need to use signs to advertise to customers, and most types of signs are covered through an application review and permitting process. However, many businesses are skirting the regulatory process, process, and putting up temporary signs and flags, and it kind of makes Fresno look like a giant yard sale. Signs are regulated under the City of Fresno Municipal Ordinance, Chapter 12, Article 17. The examples I will show fall under Section 12-1711, prohibited signs, number I, temporary importable signs. I'd like to show some, show you some rather flagrant violations of the sign ordinance. These photos were all taken on or near Blackstone Avenue, and it seems the businesses are just trying to outdo each other, clamoring for attention. This is just so much visual clutter. They are made of temporary materials, but they are a permanent fixture. Freestanding signs are required to be a minimum of five feet inside the property line, and are supposed to be limited to one sign. This is just kind of a typical example. These sign twirlers would be in the category of, category F, animated or moving signs, which require a conditional use permit and review by the city traffic engineer. No portion of the sign shall encroach on, into a public right-of-way. He's clearly standing right on the street corner. I've noticed that these have, there are fewer of these than there used to be, but they're still out there. Car dealerships and car washes really like these flapping flags. This one has eight. Here's another one. They're supposed to be temporary, these are temporary flags. The larger yellow ones on the poles are made of either some sort of a cardboard or plastic, and there's a lot of them. This is just typical Blackstone Avenue.
I think your, your time is up, but I would like to have you continue at my request.
Thank you, sir. This gas station has coffee, beer, and buys gold. Even McDonald's has gotten into this, and this is the weirdest of temporary signs. It's a mannequin with a blonde wig and a mechanism that rotates the sign like this. She pops up in various locations. I think they saw me taking a picture of her, 'cause she disappeared the next day. However, I got a feeling she will return at some point in, in a different location. So I ask that you take some action to enforce the ordinances that are already in place, and just today, as you leave, drive up O Street and just continue. Drive up Blackstone Avenue, it's only seven miles, all the way up to Herndon, and you'll see what I mean. Thank you very much for your attention. Kathleen Cruz? Thank you.
Thank you.
The code enforcement officer, Dell Estabrook, did reach out to me last week, and I appreciated his, his attention and effort and desire also to address this issue.
Oh, thank you for looking after our city and bringing these things to staff's attention as well as ours, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad you're here today. Thanks. We have comments? A member, Olivier?
Yes, first of all, I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to thank you for that presentation. You know, the, the only thing I would say is that with unemployment among mannequins at an all-time high, this body will not support any regulation that will put mannequins out of a job. I mean, we just, we just can't. I mean, they're all, look at how skinny they are, you know? They need to eat. No mannequins. So thank you for your presentation. That's, that's mostly the Seventh District, which I represent, and I'm, I'm well aware of the, of the situation there, so thank you. We'll, we'll continue to work with, with Dell to hopefully find a happy medium, but thank you for coming down.
Great, thank you very much.
Member Brandal?
Kathleen, I also want to thank you for the presentation. Dell, I want to call you up if I can. Jennifer, you might be waiting in the wings as well.
Is this about mannequins, or?
Yeah, it's about, no, it's about, let Olivier deal with the mannequins. Dell, you and I had a conversation just the other day in my office, and we talked a little bit about signs. And I've, I've actually, just so you know, Clint, this, this happens all across our city. I've actually got a very involved citizen on Herndon, on Weston Herndon, that, that owns a shop and talks about signs to me every time I go in. So Dell, where are we at with signs in our city? And I know you're on it, so kind of, our citizens just need to hear more.
Dell Estabrook from Code Enforcement. In our new development code, there is a 24-page attachment that is nothing but sign, signs, and more signs. So when you look at some of the things I do right now with the blight and the housing issues and zoning and broken sewer lines, we haven't really gone after them aggressively. But through the council efforts and budgeting, we now have code enforcement technicians on board, and we are currently in the process of training them on the new sign ordinance, and we're gonna go after them here probably in the next couple of weeks, and we're gonna focus, of course, on the high-traffic areas. I see them, when I ride up and down Blackstone, I see what, what's out there, too. So we're gonna train our technicians, go after, so to speak, the low-hanging fruit, the ones that are mostly visible, the ones that I work each year, and I'm staring at Councilman Quintero, because we work the fair issues with the gas stations and the, and the mini-marts. We will use some of our higher-level senior techn, senior inspectors, as well as our conditional use, use permit folks. The new ordinance, although lengthy, is in pretty good shape, and I think we can, we can make a dent in it and clean it up.
Is there any way the City of Fresno could advertise with bullet points some of the highlights of that, of that 24-page document, so that our citizens would really start to be aware of what our expectations are?
I asked my boss to answer that.
All right, thank you, Dell.
Absolutely, Councilmember. So one of the, one of the challenges for us is prioritization of work, and as, as Mr. Estabrook has said, one of our priorities will be to address transient signs and temporary signs over a certain period of time, at which point they will need to go back the, our community revitalization technicians and conduct our citywide blight survey, which is an annual event that will occur in August. So there are certain priorities that we undertake throughout the year. Weeds in the spring, we could address temporary signage through the summer. I definitely think that there is an opportunity for us to reach out to the business community. I would like to use our partners, the Chamber, various business associations, whether it's the Beverage Association, Industry Association, or others, to ensure that they understand what the rules and the regulations are before we go out and start addressing these, these issues. It's important to make sure that they're aware of what the regulations are first, so that they have an opportunity to change their behavior, and then we can go out and begin addressing.
Yeah, it's really that awareness that I want, want to know if we can maybe do something more creative, instead of just waiting till we, till we see them with our own eyes and then go up and talk to them about it, because that takes a lot of manpower from the, from your staff.
Right.
So what if, if Blackstone, if Blackstone Avenue is one of the biggest transgressors, although I'm saying that I know that it happens on Herndon as well, and I know we have a czar arena of Blackstone Avenue, Claudia Ruiz, maybe we should pass out a bullet point, you know, describing what the new code, and we can use the fact that, that Development Code was just passed, and so here's an announcement of what, what our expectations are for the City of Fresno, and do that on maybe some of the business streets of the City of Fresno, like Blackstone, like Herndon, like, and including other streets, and just let those businesses know what we expect them, because I certainly agree with Kathleen. It gets, for me, it gets overkill, and then I start getting that concept like, are we ever gonna dig out of the hole and change the image that, that we've created for ourselves? And so, but I, I know that we had a conversation the other day about code enforcement, and, and Councilman Quintero brought up some of the things that he was concerned of in his district, and this is one of the ones that I'm concerned of in my district as, as well. And to me, it is one of the low, it is low-hanging fruit, but I do acknowledge that there are bigger fish to fry than dealing with signs, right? But, but at the same, while we are trying to fry the bigger fish, I think we still need to find a way of, of going after these, these things as well, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dell, and thank you, Kathleen.
That's it, Member Brandal? Yes?
I just had a brief, I just had a brief comment.
You're up, as well as Councilmember Quintero.
Okay. I'll wait until, I mean, who's next?
Sal.
Okay. I guess it's not that brief. Go ahead.
Jennifer, and maybe the city attorney or city manager's office. The, in the older neighborhoods and older commercial areas of the city, and this is throughout the city, because even up north, we, we have some older commercial areas and neighborhoods, where we have the, the telephone poles, whether they're owned by PG&E or, or AT&amp;T, is it, couldn't we write them a letter, asking them that on a monthly basis, they, they take all signage off their poles? I mean, there's Cars for Sale, Good Insurance, I'll Buy Your House, or Give Me Your House, something, you know, like that, that we can ask them to do that once a month? I mean, you're talking about partnerships, that, that way, it's not a load on, on, on the city, but it's their poles, and, and they should do something to come into compliance or help us out with that. The, and then also, like writing a letter, having the city attorney's office or your office write a letter to the Big Fresno Fair and, and to SMG and say, in your contracts, any promotions that you do, you put up posters all over the place, then you're gonna get charged for them if they get taken down for that event. We have, we still have Reptile Show at the Big Fresno Fair that was in April that are all over the place.
Right.
And, and so where it would say, you know, the, the company that contracted out is gonna get fined, the Big Fresno Fair or SMG, and if they put it in their contracts with any event that's held their promotion, folks, then they can get charged for that. But I, I think that, you know, those are the types of things maybe that you're, we can look at as far as, as having partnerships, and it's, it, it doesn't have you folks chasing all over town when it's, that, that's somebody else's responsibility.
Absolutely. I, that is definitely something that we will work with the city attorney's office on. Signs in the public right-of-way are not covered under Chapter 15, but it is definitely a problem and a proliferation of signage in our community, and if we can just clean up that piece, a lot of the other will, will seem a little more minor, but absolutely we'll work with the city.
Yeah, because even, even election signs, I think you, you can charge for those that don't take them down and clean them up. I mean, you know, that, I think these folks would be, should be good, responsible community partners with us.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Robert Olivier?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, to share a couple things and, and kind of talk a little bit about, and I mean, is this, is it time to, to have this discussion? Is it okay, Doug? Okay. You know, kind of going back to what Councilmember Brandal was saying, and I do believe that it's about priorities. And I, I thank you for your presentation. I think you're 100% right. However, I represent that area and most, well, I've never received a phone call complaining about signs, and I'll get back to that in just a second. The phone calls that I get are about blighted and abandoned buildings and substandard housing. That's what I get, because the neighborhoods around Blackstone are being eaten by this cancer of blight, and so the phone calls that I get are about protect my neighborhood. And so when someone does call to complain about signs, it's a business owner turning in a competitor, in almost all the cases. So if I got a guy that's selling burgers for a more expensive price than the guy that just put up the, you know, the blow-up guy that goes like this, he's calling my office so that I turn it in to bust his competitor. And I've got warring gas stations in this area, where the one, one guy's selling Keystone cheaper than the other guy, so this guy will turn in that guy. And so code enforcement will go out and bust the one guy, and then not the guy across the street that has the big signs up. So it, it becomes that these small business people are using our code enforcement department as a tool to screw their competitors, which, which I don't want our, our precious as a tool to screw their competitors, which I don't want our precious code enforcement resources to be used as a private police force of liquor stores to go out and bust the other ones. So it's such a, it's actually very intricate. And if we, as a policymaking body or as an administration decide, okay, you know what, we're going to take four people and at all times they're going to do signs, I bet you they could start at Abbey, where Abbey meets Blackstone, and they could start busting people for signs, and then five months later, they could start again at Abbey, because, I mean, how many days after they take the signs down do the signs go right back up? And the mannequins and the craziness, I mean, I agree with you, it's a circus atmosphere in places down there. So I don't know what we think the answer is on this issue. I don't think there is an answer. I don't think that there's, I mean, yeah, feel free to speak.
Councilmember Olivier, wouldn't you agree, I mean, we've got, we're just trying to focus on Blackstone Avenue, right? And Blackstone Avenue, all the way from District 2, District 6, down to District 1 and 3, and through Central City, we're almost all impacted by Blackstone. We should start with Blackstone and inform, and we have a czar of Blackstone now.
They know.
They know.
They know.
Well, the citizens that I've talked about are a little bit unclear about, for instance, Dell, I believe you told me the signs that flap, those are now, can you talk to that for a second?
Under the new code, you can use them, but you have to have a temporary permit to use them.
Gee, I didn't know that.
For 30 days, 30 days at a time, 60 days maximum in a year. That's how intricate the new code is.
Right. So, so, yeah.
So in America, we have to have a permit for inflatable sign in front of your business.
What about the moving sign like that?
The sign jigglers?
Yes.
As long as they're, excuse me, as long as they're not on the mediums, they are still authorized.
And, okay.
It's a free country, man. What do you want to do?
Well, you know, if I could help.
I think we should, I think as a body, we bring this back as an agenda item. I think we do.
We might have to do that, we might have to tackle that more. But my point was, I didn't even know some of these new modifications to the development code in regards to signs.
And I am with you, I don't either.
I know we voted on it, but if I don't understand.
I'm having buyer's remorse on this thing.
What's that?
I think we bring it back, and we fine-tune it.
We go from 24 pages to 48?
We go from 24 pages to one.
That's what I'm trying to get to. I would love to see a single-page bullet point presentation.
I got a single page, the First Amendment, freedom of speech.
Well, okay, if you could get Council District 7 to walk that down Blackstone Avenue and include our one-page sign ordinance, that'd be fantastic, so that more citizens could know before they have to encounter code enforcement. I don't need Dell's team to be the first ones out there saying, hey, your signs are wrong. It'd be fantastic if more people understood that through the process. And unless you disagree with Kathleen, Kathleen, I appreciate all your photos, I mean, those were pictures taken of our city, right?
No, this is actually the best debate we've had up here in months, so I appreciate you bringing this up.
Yeah, yes, yep, exactly. So obviously, we'll have to come back and.
Yeah, this is a good one.
I agree.
And I mean, Code, you guys do a great job, but we need 500 of you to go out and to fix all the problems that we have in the City of Fresno.
Is that a budget motion?
No, that's not a budget motion. I mean, it's just, there's so much for you to get to, and I agree, Director Clark, it's an issue of priorities. So how do we prioritize it?
Okay, folks, we have a little latitude with our dialogue since we're early on our commitments today with our agenda. However, City Attorney Sloan might have some comments to make.
I just had a couple of thoughts. One, on the illegal signs that are posted everywhere, we could treat that like graffiti, where the owner is responsible for removing it, and if they don't, we can just take it down, whether it be on telephone poles or whatever it might be, or another business. The other thing is that in this area, there are a lot of First Amendment issues that we have to be very careful of. For example, somebody holding a sign on a public sidewalk is entitled to do that, and there's not much we can do about that.
Steve, we limit the number of signs to three-by-five card the size of the sign?
If there are vehicle safety issues, we can look into that, but they're entitled to be there.
All right.
This is city council improv, we have to fill time, and we're just, we can fill time, man.
So you're going to go and notify your folks in, on Blackstone, about the new rules on signage?
Will I? No, I don't have any, I don't have any executive power.
I think that's what Mr. Steve Brandau was suggesting, that you go educate the business owners.
You know, I'm going to make signs and put them up all over that educate people about signs. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, we have professional city staff to handle this for us.
Well, Ms. Cruz, thank you for bringing this forward and.
Thank you.
Engaging us in a lively debate. Thank you. Well, we are done with our agenda until 1:30, and we'll see you all back here at that time. Thank you very much.
This is our afternoon session of June 9th for City Council, and we had a pulled item for Councilmember Soria. We don't have a quorum to address that issue, so we'll have to set that over to another day where we can address it, but I want to appreciate, thanks, staff and PG&E for being here to accommodate that. And here comes our supervisor-elect, Sal Quintero. Thanks, Sal. So without the necessary quorum to finish our business, we'll move on to the ceremonial part, and that would be me. So we're going to honor Council General Vicente Sanchez Ventura.
Buenos dias. Gracias por estar aquí para celebrar este gran día. That's my Spanish.
It's Italian.
It has an Italian accent, so, yes, please, everyone, because I know, like at City Hall with the council, it takes a team of champions, in my view, to make things work, and that's what we have here. So, you know, we, seriously, we want to take this opportunity to honor you and to recognize you, Council General Vicente Sanchez Ventura. And I love, I love to say, it's like capriolio, you know, it kind of rolls. Yes, absolutely. So, anyway, we want to extend to you not just my thanks, but our thanks, and the entire city of Fresno's appreciation for all you and your team have done for us during your tenure here at Fresno. And I wanted to talk about a couple of things. We talked about this at the council office, your ability to think outside the box. And from that, you've created great partnerships far and wide, you've helped with academic opportunities with the City of Fresno and the community in general. And I wanted to just say, for example, in 2014, you partnered with the Education and Leadership Foundation of Fresno, with the, and you were able to give more than $89,000, $89,000 in scholarships to local college students. Fantastic. Also, you were able to earmark $11,000, this is just a little sample, $11,000 to open a community square, to help local Mexican national adults learn to read and write Spanish, English, also to be able to finish their Mexican primary education, also to receive vocational training, also to get an American GED, also to become a student at the Community College in Central California. So, I mean, that's just a little tip of the iceberg of you thinking outside the box and having this team to support you. So, it's, I'm really sad, because we've become good friends, and I really enjoy my time with you and your staff, and as do my colleagues, and they're going to have a moment to say something to you as well. So, thank you so much for helping so many families, you'll be sorely missed, but we know we have a friend in Cuba. So with that, hopefully, we can do a sister city, maybe, and continue this relationship after today. So, Councilmember Soria, did you want to add a few words?
So I, too, I'm delighted to have you here this afternoon. Obviously sad, because you will be leaving the City of Fresno, but also happy for your next chapter in your life. And I know that as we've become friends, we will continue to be friends and hopefully have the opportunity to come visit you, as mentioned by my colleague. But I also just want to extend my gratitude and tell you how much I'm thankful for all the work that you and your team have done over the last few years, really to extend an outreach to the Mexican community here, not only in the City of Fresno, but throughout the region. Very, very important, the work that you guys have done of thinking outside the box. So, de parte de mí y de el concejal y del alcalde, lo queremos felicitar, darle las gracias por todo el trabajo que ha hecho aquí en nuestra comunidad, y le deseamos lo mejor así usted comienza su nuevo, un nuevo capítulo en su vida, y esperamos siguiendo siendo amigos, pero muchísimas gracias de todo corazón por todo el trabajo que ha hecho aquí en nuestra comunidad.
Wow. I guess my Spanish was not that great after all, but I tried. Yes, some days. Sal, one or two?
Señor Vicente, estimado consulado, I want to tell you that the years that I've been here at City Hall, I've had the opportunity to meet several consulate members and their staffs, and I've had the opportunity to work for them, but I can tell you this, I can tell you, they were all very, very good to work with, but, you know, you're probably the best one that has done, that has done the most in the short time that you've been here. With all the programs that you've been able to offer to the community, I know it's a lot of the hard work of your staff, and you're going to be the first one to say it was because of your staff, but I'm very grateful for the opportunities that you were able to provide to the people in our community. And as my colleague said, you know, you reached out, you reached out to the community and you said, it's an open door, please come and visit us and come and see what we have to offer to help you to become citizens or whatever paperwork you need, we're here to help. And I hadn't seen that until you came. I saw more open process since you came, and I really want to thank you for that, y le deseo lo mejor de la vida.
I suppose it's my turn.
This is your turn.
No, thank you, City Councilmembers, thank you, Señor Capriol. This is something that is part of my life now. Fresno, the Central Valley is part of my life. I was saying that when I came here three years ago, yes, I came just first to learn about the community, to learn what's happening here, yes. And after that, it's time to work. And, well, I have three years to complete part of my work, probably I need more, double of time or triple, but I think the City of Fresno deserves the best, deserves the best leaders, you are the best leaders, and deserves that the Mexican community could have a voice in the future, because everybody needs to live better in this life. And now what I'm seeing is that my community, the Mexican community, or Mexican-American community, deserve more, more health, more education, more rights, et cetera, yes. And you are doing an example leadership, working for them, and just the consulate, the consulate role was to collaborate with you, with the council members, with the City of Fresno, to have more results in this effort, yes. What we did, my staff, part of my staff out here, is worked hard for this. It's probably beyond the regular work that we do, yes, but it's possible. And thank you again, I taking this recognition from you with a lot of proud, and really, I'm going to talk a lot about the City of Fresno in the future, and now I'm a Fresno promoter.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Ah, well, I'm going to Cuba, yes. Cuba, yes. Cuba en los próximos tres semanas, yo creo que ya estoy, ya mi primer día de trabajo.
I know we'll be a part of your life, and you as well as a part of the fabric of our community. So with that in mind, we'd like to draw some adoption papers up and adopt you as a family member in the City of Fresno, and I want to thank you for my pen, appreciate that, I'll cherish that. So with that, we'll have the proclamation read, Madam Clerk, please.
Whereas the Honorable Vicente Sanchez Ventura has been a career diplomat with the Mexican Foreign Service since 1981, and has served as head counsel at the consulate of Mexico in Fresno since June 6, 19, excuse me, June 6, 2013. And whereas, Consuel Sanchez Ventura has a varied career that has provided him experience in all consular affairs, specifically in the realm of support for Mexican nationals abroad. He has held various positions within Mexico's diplomatic network, including Post in Dallas, Puerto Rico, and New Orleans. And whereas, Consuel Sanchez Ventura was appointed Deputy Chief of Mission at the Embassy of Mexico in Nicaragua from 1994 to 1997, Deputy Counsel at the General Consulate in Austin from 1999 to 2006, and Head Counsel at the consulate in Detroit from 2006 to 2013. And whereas, since being appointed as head counsel in Fresno, Consuel Sanchez Ventura has affirmed his commitment to strengthening the activities the consulate performs and the services it provides to approximately 1.5 million Mexican nationals living within the counties of Fresno, Ennio, Kings, Kern, Madera, Mariposa, Merced, and Tulare. And whereas, while serving as head counsel at Sanchez Ventura, has made education a top priority, worked to change the perception of Mexicans by promoting the contributions of Mexican professionals in the valley, and facilitated business opportunities primarily in agriculture between Mexico and Fresno, California. And whereas, in July 2016, Vicente Sanchez Ventura will embark on a new journey as he accepts a new position as Head of Consular Section in Cuba after serving three years as the head counsel with the consulate of Mexico in Fresno. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno council members, do hereby honor and applaud Vicente Sanchez Ventura and commend him for his contributions to Central California during his time with the consulate of Mexico in Fresno. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby proclaim June 9, 2016, to be Vicente Sanchez Ventura Day in the City of Fresno.